Getting started just a little bit late, so we'll get the show on the road. There is a sign up sheet at the podium if anyone would like to speak. I did write down the names of folks who have already signed up. And so we'll go ahead and start with Ann Swears. And as Ann comes up, if you've got a phone, if you put it on silent or vibrate for us, courtesy to the speakers. And we've got our shot clock right here that's set at five minutes. Let me just ask if you've got some questions or if you have any comments that you'd like to give us. This is a time for open dialogue. It's a lot less formal than our normal commission meetings, so there's a little bit more open time for dialogue. We're glad you take your time.
Hi, I'm Ann Swears and I live in Earlville, Maryland. And I'm here for Friends of Middle Lane. We still haven't given up on Middle Lane, but we've been fighting for it for about a hundred years. And I just wanted to say that it looks terrible down there. It's not an asset to the county the way it looks. And before people get in, they say they're going to help us. The only people that have even said, "It's not fair the way we're treated," is Mrs. Brumall. She says, "It's not fair the way they're treated." They want the road open for emergency vehicles, for farmers, for the Amish, and it all falls on deaf ears. And really, not that much money goes down into Earlville. I live on Leeb Road. It's a little skinny road that probably hundreds of cars go up and down that road every day in the winter, thousands in the summer. Voters finance a lot down there. You get a lot of money from the voters, campers, but nothing gets done. I've been there for 50 years. It looks exactly the same. The only thing that's not there is the milk stands. Exactly, we get nothing, no consideration, and now they want to say your farmland's not worth anything. You can't build because, "Oh, it looks too bad down there." Leeb Road has trees growing up because they haven't mowed. Well, they can't mow because they don't have any money. But the snowplows won't be able to get down Leeb Road in the winter because the trees and the multiple rose bushes are all grown up. Nothing has been done for 50 years, and it looks like ConAgra can come in and they're going to be the only ones that are going to be interested in our farmland because nobody else will be able to buy it because we're in Tier Four. But anyway, the Bohemia River looks like debris from the mill pond has just about covered it over so that boats can't get in and out of there now. It looks terrible. You maybe should drive down and take a look. But this is a fight that we've been fighting for many, many years, and nobody seems to care because, hey, they're paying their taxes. So, but we feel like it's taxation without representation because we don't get anything. Thank you.
Harlan Williams?
Harlan Williams, 166 Little Lea Pro, Dr. Maryland. There have been a lot of people here today talking about tiers, as we know, PEA or S. And I want to talk about another avenue of possibility of defeating what the state is trying to do, usurping the powers of the counties. Article 66B was created to give the local jurisdictions, the counties, towns, power to plan for property. I have seen nothing in the paper, very many articles, I've seen no legislation where it has been rescinded in any way. And there are a lot of people here concerned about what tiers will be used. And I know the planning commissioner last night suggested a revision, maybe go back to what we had done with our own plans. And that's good from the tier standpoint, but I think there's another avenue that we could all take. And I said, "We," but about Cecil County, I'm talking about the rural counties of Maryland who are going to be most affected by this tier operation, which is going to be devastating to property values. I don't own any AR ground or any SR ground, but we've been involved with the farmer community for a long time. We gave a Family Farmer of the Year, we started as the Farmer of the Year, then the Family Farmer of the Year for 40-some years with the Farm Bureau. So we've always been very conscious of the value of our farm and farmer community in Cecil County. And I think some people have forgotten about the value of farms, or they're thinking more about the value of farms and the consideration of farms than they are a farmer. The farmer's the ones that own these farms that we're all talking about, and very few people take into consideration what the farmers think. It's evident that something can be done, I think, with Article 66Bs. I have copies of it here that I'd like to leave with each one of here. But I want to leave you with a letter from a very short form and ask you to take an action. And that action is that you vote within the commissioners to the following. I'll read this out to you, then leave a copy with you. State of Maryland, under Article 66B, gave our counties and other government jurisdictions absolute land use planning authority. That's a fact. Under the state's sweeping demands, including the tier regulations and other incredulous land use restrictions, I've seen nothing legislated by a state wherein Article 66B has been revised, modified, or changed in any way. It is hereby requested that Cecil County commissioners take an immediate vote. I don't mean today, but challenge the legality of the state action and joint forces of other rural counties to do the same. This first action, the first action would be a great, to get a big opinion at the extent will lead the state's right to modify that overall article, Article 66B. Thank you very much.
Harlan, we did look at that. And I can tell you, Delegate Schmiegel at Mako suggested that the rural counties get together and file suit against the state of Maryland. I'm sitting next to Bill Jeans at Planning Commission. Bill, are you here today? I haven't heard. Maybe not. He had a copy of Article 66B where it says the state doesn't have jurisdiction in the local areas. The problem is that they, with the authority that they have to change or approve our master water sewer plan and the approvals for other things we have to go to the state for, they can make it very difficult on us. And our planning and zoning department advised us that probably wouldn't be the best route to go down. And I think we should explore at least what, and I have asked, what precedent has been set in fighting for our economy? And I think the courts have pretty much ruled it, there isn't precedent set to where it's in our favor. Is that correct, Al?
I don't see what has been anything. It's been ruled, but I don't know anything where it has been challenged. Can you give an example of where it's been challenged?
I think the toll issue, I researched on that.
Well, I don't know about toll. I'm talking about...
Well, that's the question now, that them, you know, imposing their will in our area and the effects that it has.
Well, how far have you let it go with what it challenges is the question. And I think, not just Cecil County, but the rural counties to get together, there is a pretty good little authority to take this matter to the very end. And I think we're all chicken to take that step.
No, we're not chicken. You give us the tools, and we'll continue researching as well.
I would request then that the judge commissioners do what I ask, and I just devote a word, an investigation of that potential. I think it's very absolutely, that's the second and most effective way to get away from tiers.
Harlan, I can tell you, we were, all five of us were at the Maryland Association of Counties conference, and there was quite a bit of discussion, especially on the rural counties, about how to deal with the state continuing to impose their will on local land use, which Article 66B gives local commissioners and council members the authority for land use. What I discovered was that most of the rural counties still are not really aware of how this is going to impact them. Most of them have not done their tier mandate yet. Cecil County is ahead of the game on this. And I think what we need to do is to help, and when I say ahead of the game, not, in that we know what the state is requiring us to do, or asking us to do, or whatever it is. But there's a lot of discussion along very same lines that you're talking about with some of the members of the rural coalition of counties in Maryland. And it appears that the, what is happening here is there's a move to try to make things as expensive as possible to build, or to put so much regulation in place that we can't afford to build either. And what I sense is the state is trying to drive the population back to the Baltimore area. Now, you know, I guess time will tell whether that's the case or not. But more importantly, we have to stand up for what's right here. We are looking, I'm looking into that. I can speak to the rest of the board, but clearly, we have to draw the line in the sand. I've had a personal conversation with MDP Secretary Rich Hall at Mako, and I said, "I can't do this. I will not do this to the landowners in Cecil County."
Well, I think you're asking very, but I have talked to some pretty proud attorneys, and I'm not going to mention names because it's not fair, but...
Harley, if they think they can win, they'll do it pro bono. I'll hire them tomorrow. Okay? Because here's the part of the problem. We know that litigation is super expensive, especially when you want to sue the state. And so we're not going to waste taxpayer dollars on a case that we may not win. So we want to make sure that we have researched this carefully. And I can tell you that the rural counties are still considering going in together to take challenge the state action if we feel that we can win. And so it is an ongoing evaluation, but we're not going to waste dollars trying to...
Well, I don't disagree with that.
So I can tell you that it is an option that we are seriously considering.
And just one last point. If you look at the genesis of where all this started, it starts with the Clean Water Act. And the feds push down, the state push down, the counties. And that is what is happening here with all of this business. You just had the BAT, the Technology Denertifications pass, that was done administratively. It wasn't done through the front door, the General Assembly. But if you go back and you track where this started in the very beginning, the genesis is at the Clean Water Act from the feds. And that's how this has, processes moved forward to where we're at today.
I had the whole idea playing around, and I've read it three to four times. It's not, it's not a thing to protect the bay because their actions are not... Septic systems, good septic systems are not the problem in Chesapeake Bay. The sewer that belts itself from the towns and the cities is just fantastically more than a septic tank, good septic tank.
I sat in the hallway in Annapolis for six to 11 hours on the House bill of this and on the Senate bill of this, and everything you're saying was delivered to those people sitting there, and it still passed. And you had experts on each side, and at the end of the day, the bottom line is, is they felt Annapolis, anything that's in the Chesapeake Bay watershed, they needed a denertification septic.
And they haven't approved a denertification, weren't they? And that's why it has to go to the courts, what I'm saying.
Trust me.
I know, I know what you're saying. It's the problem.
We are understanding.
But how are we going to get away with this is the question. I think they might as well be...
Thank you. Vincent Salem?
I keep hearing this word called precedence over and over and over. Precedence means something that was done before. It doesn't say it was right. It's been done before. Our Declaration of Independence states, "We are endowed by our Creator," not by the county, not by the state, not by the federal government, by our Creator. The Creator has given us certain available rights, among them is life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Of course, the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendment used the term "property" rather than "pursuit of happiness." It goes so far to state that property should not be taken without due process or justification, just like the McCoy farm, right? You pay him for his property rights. If you do Tier Four, I expect everyone else to be paid for their property rights as well. And that's not being done here. It's just taken, period. And that's just not right. If this goes through Earlville, they'll be a wasteland. They can't even get money now.
It already is.
It's going to be worse. With our constitutional right, that's the leg you stand on. That's the legal challenge that you go before the state on, because that's the challenge that you will win on. Article 66B is another issue to challenge on, is a secondary motion. But between the two, this just isn't right. It doesn't pass the smell test. Otherwise, you wouldn't have a crowd here disputing this. And I expect the county to take a stand on our behalf and be brave and take these challenges that may not be so popular because of precedents. And that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Karen Williams?
I'm general partner for the partnership. I said we want to second Harlan Williams' thoughts and ideas, and we all hope that he proceed with his thought.
Thank you. Mary Everhart?
My name's Mary Everhart, and I live in Delaware. And I'm an equestrian. And I'm concerned about the animal control policy that would impact horses. I come in to ride regularly at Fair Hill. And if I need a health certificate every 100 days, it's an unnecessary expense. If there's a manure management policy that requires that I have to diaper my horse, that's insane. This is a venue in Cecil County that every year hosts the Fair Hill International, and for the two years prior to the Olympics, it is a venue for Olympic athletes. We're not going to ask them to diaper their horses. The racetrack, I mean, this policy, this language in this animal control policy is just, needs to change.
Hopefully, it can provide some clarification. This was never meant to be a large animal control ordinance, and we need to do some research because the whole health certificate issue, we took it out of the ordinance because it was in one of several drafts of version. Al, can you look on that for us? Because the, my understanding was what we passed had nothing to do with horses at all. And I can very much understand your concern. We clearly need to clarify.
Yes, the 209-41 health certificates, the majority of that section deals with dogs, cats, ferrets, doesn't mention horses.
Yeah, we didn't take it out. There is still state health ordinance that has to be enforced, and I think we agreed to take it out of our ordinance, but that's still...
And to put it to the state. But that didn't have to do with animals coming over the state line. It had to do with you're importing animals for sale. That's what the state health certificate laws deal with. Our ordinance doesn't. And Al, you said most of it has to deal with...
Yeah, the 209-41 health certificates, it deals, there are these three or four references to dogs, cats, or ferrets.
Okay. But from a horse point of view, because I do travel a lot with my horse. I mean, I've been in 14 states riding. I hope to make all 48. And the health certificate is a document from the USDA. It's generally only good for 10 days for its expiration. And recreational riders are usually not required to have it to pull up to a park. You know, I mean, if you're Gene Glasgow and you ride from coast to coast, you know, you don't have a health certificate, you know? You just ride your horse.
So I think bringing in an animal, you know, if they live in Delaware or Pennsylvania or visiting Cecil County for the weekend, clearly, it didn't make any sense to have a health certificate. I mean, we all agree on that, so...
Well, I have to say that the intent of the board is not, never was, to include equine or farm animals, okay? Period. Secondly, it never says it in here. And I know that some people are trying to infer and imply. Do not infer or imply. Please don't do that because, no. Don't infer, don't imply. If it says horse, then it means horse. If it says equine, it means equine. I don't think the word is in here in one place anywhere. Bottom line is, it does not cover, does not cover equine or farm animals.
That's not what some interpretations, and they're out there on Facebook and the social media.
Right, right here, right here, right here, right now, we've got four of the five commissioners, which is all that matters, because three makes the difference. And if you want to all agree right here, right now, it does not apply to horses or farm animals.
I learned a long time ago, you don't believe the tool, Facebook can...
I'm sorry, where did you start with?
I said, "I've learned a long time ago, you don't believe the tool, Facebook can..."
Well, hopefully, you'll be able to correct that for us, or let us know where those sites are so that we can go on and officially correct that misperception. I would like to be able to do that.
Okay, yes, I want business to be as usual. Thank you.
Gotcha. Thank you. Karen Wallace?
I live in Rosings, Maryland. I care for the equine also, I need horses. Finally, I ride a lot up at Fair Hill. So I just wanted a lot of things clarified. Now, I've never seen one document to talk about the 209. But anyway, it says here, inclusion of equine is a hidden phrase included, but not listed. So like I said, I don't know what's on this paper to be the truth. I just want to be able to ride my horse at Fair Hill. If my horse poops, I don't have to scoop it up. And I don't have to be running every five days, 10 days, 30, whatever, to get health papers. It is costly to do that. I do have coltens every year on all of my horses. They have the shots and whatever they need. Like I say, I have some, I just don't understand, like, some of these things written on this sheet here about...
We have it, we have it.
I don't know. It says stuff about the rabies certificate, and it says stuff about, can you say, ordering it earlier?
The animal care and control ordinance is directed at domestic animals that are gentling in your house. If you have cats in your house, or dogs in your house, or ferrets in your house, or other pets in your house, it applies to. And it also applies to pet stores where you purchase domestic animals that you would put in your house. Does not apply to farm animals. It doesn't apply to equine. It doesn't apply to any large animal of the sort. And I have to say, I'm very sorry that it's gotten people worked up because it, that was never the intent of any of the commissioners. Now, I personally voted against the ordinance because I thought there was way too much in it, and I thought it was a little bit overreach. There's a lot of things in there that I did not agree with. But I can say that none of the commissioners ever implied or directly wanted any of these regulations to impact the equine industry, the people that are recreational, equine people, as far as we're concerned. There's no changes to the use of Fair Hill. If Fair Hill has rules, regulations, you have to comply with those rules and regulations. Whatever Fair Hill says goes. The county commissioners are not changing any of the rules for out of staters, for people that live in the county.
But I can understand it. If I saw this, I'd be very concerned as well. So I understand that those of you who are here for the same reason, I hope we've been able to settle the concern. You mentioned the cost associated with that, and that, in order, in an animal control ordinance, we would have to enforce that. You can imagine how costly that would be for all the taxpayers to be able to enforce it. So, you know, clearly, that wasn't the intention. So I hope that's been able to settle that for you.
Well, and I have friends that have spoken to the secretary, and they said it did include horses, you know?
What's the secretary?
Did our office...
The county commissioners all...
Yeah, let me try to explain that. There have been some inquiries, and I think as the commissioners know, there is a high level ambiguity with this ordinance. What I instructed my staff to say is there may be certain provisions of this that may apply to other animals than dogs and cats. If you take a look at the definition of at large, and Mr. Hodge referenced this earlier, there's just some ambiguity. That was the point we were trying to make with the callers that we were dealing with. There is certain ambiguity about the definition of at large. There's no specific definition of animal. And that's why I think these folks are asking some questions today. And for instance, 209-602, and I specifically had Katie and the others pass this information on neglecting cruelty. That would apply to, you know, the pants that's applied to other domestic animals. And the animal care, the animal care and control facilities are provided as answer to this cause before, as far as neglecting cruelty. So there are certain, I don't think we can say 100% that it doesn't pertain, there are certain provisions that may apply to horses.
Well, there is a remedy then, and that is to ratchet it down. And I know that there, in the animal control ordinance, there were some things that were left behind after we had taken out cats. We need to go back and make sure that we're consistent in what we're saying they should enforce on which animal. But we can also go back and show what the definition of at large of which animals that includes. Was there a conversation with Fair Hill, Mr., well, Mr. Volinsky, was there a conversation with Fair Hill and Mr. Sudon in which he was also concerned that the horses would be a part of 209?
He didn't address it to me, no.
Okay.
But there is a concern.
Yes.
In this policy, if any of us have a horse that drops an order on that public or private property, it's a misdemeanor punishable by 30 days in jail and $2,500 fine.
What we're always going to find is that we need to have a conversation with Mr. Sudon, the ranger at Fair Hill, to clarify what 209 is, and we need to update the language, you know, make it kind of clear.
His biggest problem, that Fair Hill International draws people from all over the world, and if you're going to apply this to it, we've got a big problem for all the people in Cecil County that are in China.
Clearly, we, I think we've stated that's not applicable, so hopefully, we've been able to address that concern, and clearly, we need to clarify the ordinance as well. So, thank you very much.
And I did see the articles in the newspaper that was in there in July, in the July, I think. So that stated stuff about, you know, horses. So I think that's what got people confused.
Yes.
Okay. I understand.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Robert Russell?
Fair Hill requires a county's, that's all they require.
Could you speak into the microphone?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Fair Hill, they just require the county, that's what they want to say. You know, a county's test your blood test.
Okay.
None of this other health is here, nothing like that, just, and the order, that's just not... But you're saying a horse isn't considered enough. What this says in here is considered a cattle, same as a dog, by this paper here.
That's not the animal control ordinance.
No. This is 209?
That's not what it's, because you're reading into it something that's not there. Horses don't go into cattles.
Says horse boarding, boarding facilities are considered boarding cattles?
No, that's somebody else's words. That's not, that is not in the, that's not in the order. Somebody else wrote that. You'll have to talk to Mr. Bartowski.
So this isn't nothing you wrote?
No.
Okay. So where do we get the tape when you guys redo it?
It's on our website. It's on our website.
I run a lot of horses around in and out of state, and you're going to, this is going to be out of state.
I understand that.
This is not, this is somebody else's interpretation that's totally wrong.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
Okay?
On our website, if you have, if you just need a printed copy, if you come to either Katie, and she'll be glad to get you a printed copy.
I would prefer the parties.
Absolutely. I'd love you a bet.
Because, I mean, I run a lot of horses, I run in and out of the state. The ones I take out, they do that most of the time.
Sure.
Because you gotta, I mean, I go one state.
So after this meeting, you'll get with Katie, she'll get you a printed copy of 209. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, sir. Keith Thompson?
Would you like me to go ahead and say all these people I've talked to?
Sure.
Thank you. Since I've been.
Well, I, I don't want to deny them their opportunity to speak, but I'd like to though.
We're, we're the same.
Okay.
We're all horse friends here. Since I've been called, I guess, a liar and people say I'm Mister Ford writing the wrong stuff, okay? This is what I, I concluded from your document, okay? And when it says on page five, domestic animals include but are not limited to, and then they talk about dogs, cats, rats, and then on that, but not limited to. And the description up above of animals completely describes horses. Horses and farm animals were in the original draft, if all of you remember this. And that's when we start raising the flag and say, if you really want to take that on.
I'm over here.
Okay, that's a big thing. Now, when you gave me this, this final copy, it still refers to animals in a way that says horses are still included. And I said, well, I need to address this. So I called the commissioners' office, not once, but two weeks in a row, and I got the answer, okay, yes, if you take a horse, you develop it in Fair Hill, you better have a health certificate or you're subject to the fine, okay? And then when somebody said in the comment, there's no comment about a horse trailer in here, okay? Animals may remain in horse trailers and sporting dog boxes in a manner which is generally accepted by the horse and sporting dog community. Well, if this doesn't cover the horse community, why would we even make reference in here to the horse community? And it goes on and on. I spent hours and hours and hours analyzing it, saying, this is going to cause a lot of heartburn for people, it's going to cause heartburn for Cecil County, the people at Fair Hill. I've got 129 members, half of them are in Delaware, some are in Jersey, some are in Virginia. They're dying to come in here and use our facilities, but if they got to buy by these regulations, it's going to hurt them, really hurt them. So it was the way this thing is written and then nobody's communicating. All you gotta say in writing is, do not include horses. Make our lives easier. So that's why I put the 17 points together. So these folks have the summary to try and help them understand the impact this can have. And those of you that read my letter together, it wasn't a lie. I told you, read all 35 pages because you won't believe what you got inside of here.
Well, I agree. And, and when you called the, the office, they said it could.
Yes, they did.
You're right.
They did.
They said anything that said horse, animal.
But I just tell you, we're the ones that would be enforcing this and, and I appreciate you bringing this to our attention. We will change the language.
Yes.
And that was because of your work.
And I don't want to hurt the gentleman next to you. He called me and said, John, it doesn't apply. And I'd love to take his word for it, except one night he used this word, hearsay. Well, if I had my horse crap on my Irish Town Road and I get a $2,500 fine, I'm going to say, no, we're not covered by the policy. And I, and Commissioner Hodges said, they're going to say, oh, well, that's just hearsay, okay? I need something writing for these people, my 129 members, and this lady's a member of the Delaware Equine Council, she needs it for all her hundreds of members too. Please, somebody put something in writing that lets us understand this doesn't apply to equine people.
Very reasonable for that.
Okay?
Thank you.
Question? Thank you.
Can I interrupt for just a minute, please? I understand that the farmers have, are coming by, they've taken their time to be here today to make their statement. Could we have the blinds raised so that they could be seen and their presence heard?
Sure. Okay, Mr., so Keith Thompson, would you like to speak? You got a tough act to follow there.
It's your job, dear, right together. I just want to understand, I have a small boarding operation. What I'm hearing is, this, this is not going to affect me in any way for future boarding of horses.
You're talking about horses?
Horses.
Horses, yeah.
And explain to me the difference between equine and horses, please.
It's the same thing.
Absolutely. I just want to be sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Elmer Townsend?
Hi, my name is Elmer Townsend. I live in Elkton, 130 and a half of Theeefron. Peace and quiet is what I made the talk about today. I live right across from the emergency unit, Union Hospital. Back in April, I went over to Union Hospital, asked about the ambulances, why they continue to let them run. Living right across the street, the ambulances are in there 24 hours, seven days a week. And it's become a problem with the noise. You got your windows open, you can hear them and smell them. And it's, if you can't have real peace and quiet in the home, then where are you supposed to be? I'm getting run around over there. I've spoke to everybody. And we're getting nowhere. The problem seemed like it was easing up, but it seems like now it's getting worse.
Mr. Townsend, I've attended the EMS advisory meetings and the chiefs' meetings and they were talking about the complaint. And I learned there that the ambulances have to keep running because if they turn them off, a lot of times they won't start back up again. And I'm, I'm not sure why.
That's not true.
Oh, that's not.
That wouldn't be true. I wouldn't be happy if I couldn't make things.
Well, there's supposedly, hold on, let me finish. They said something about that it would have been nice if they had designed the entrance of the emergency for the Union Hospital where the ambulances pull in. There could have been a lot better design that would have avoided what you're having to endure.
So we just deal with it?
No, no, I, I encouraged them to include Union Hospital on their board so that they could have better communication. I don't understand why the volunteer fire department and EMS weren't included in the design of that building. But I don't, I don't see why we can't revisit that as well, so.
I, I, I believe there is a solution to this problem. I, I own trucks myself. There used to be history, the diesel trucks, you, you just didn't turn them off, you just let them run. But.
Mack motors.
Whatever. But at the end of the day, we're in a new world, new technology, we want to reduce fuel consumption, we want to reduce pollution, and in many jurisdictions, they have an idling law that trucks and vehicles have to be shut down after a certain period of time. And quite frankly, many engine manufacturers already programmed that into their engine that, that if an engine is idling for a certain period of time, it'll automatically shut down by itself. So at the end of the day, I think that there is a solution to this and if, if in fact, the ambulances are being held up by the hospital, that's one solution. Let's, let's get them turned on, or get turned out. The second thing is that if they have to plug in an extension cord to the truck or the ambulance to keep their engine warm and/or keep the cabin of the ambulance cool, because I think that they also carry medicine and some other things, but, but I have to say that that, that would take a long time for it to get hot or cold. But I think that by using extension cords from the hospital, that could be solved. And I, and I don't mean by just homeowner extension cords, but I think that there is a way that we can solve this problem. And I will make a couple of phone calls to see what we can do.
I think that's what Mr. Townsend is looking for, is how we can help.
If you're lucky, first of all, I did drive, drove a truck for 30 years, old road truck. Now, I call it Christiana Hospital. When they go into Christiana, they have to cut their motors off as well. These same ambulances that are coming to Union. Some of the same drivers are cutting their trucks off when they get to Union. Another guy gets in the same truck, comes back, he gets a run. So what's the difference in them going to Union or going to Christiana cut them off?
I think a lot of it is.
You got the same medicine.
It's all habit, personal habit. And we need to make, break some habits.
Have you talked to the town leadership and the Union Hospital?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Townsend, do you, on, on that sheet, is your contact information there?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So we can, Mr. Hodges has agreed to follow up and, Commissioner Hodges, I can, we can leave it with you to follow up then? Okay, move back in touch.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tracy Lethal?
Good afternoon, commissioners. Mine, mine is in regards to Mr. Townsend's as well. Some other points that he did not bring up was, again, we tried to, this issue began in April when the weather was great, about having the windows open. I have a daughter that has asthma. These carbon monoxide fumes come into my apartment, causing me to have to close my window. Don't get me wrong, I value these men's jobs, women's jobs, they, they volunteer their time to save lives, you know, and I really much appreciate that. But they're potentially creating an emergency right across the street with my daughter's medical condition. And I have spoke with the fire chief, I have spoke with the commissioners, I have spoke with the town, I spoke with the hospital. Union Hospital has tried to work with me, even putting up a new sign, ambulances, please shut off your engines. Two months ago, my mom was admitted to Union Hospital. Her, her cubby was very close to the entrance. The fumes were ungodly inside of the emergency room. Unfortunately, the Cecil Lake was not able to interview these nurses for obvious reasons because of their jobs. So not only are us neighbors having issues with this, so are the employees of Union Hospital as well as patients. The other thing that I'd like to bring up is that it's wasting taxpayers' money by sometimes these vehicles are running for a half an hour at a time. Yesterday, I did see a perfect example where it was okay. They were transporting a patient that was coming from Union Hospital. They had to keep the, the vehicle comfortable. But on beautiful day, and I've been in the emergency room and I'm not accusing anybody, but this is just something that I've observed, the, the paramedics stick around, just hang out, talk to the nurses. Don't need to have their vehicles running for half an hour at a time. Then you're getting into our ozone layer. What happened with our country and our world trying to go green? They're allowing these vehicles to run for extensive amounts of time. That does affect our ozone layer. So it's not just a matter of pollution, noise pollution, it's taxpayers' money. I feel as though since the article ran in the Cecil Lake, it has gotten worse. They look over and they taunt Mr. Townsend and I like, what are you going to do about it? You know, Union, like I said, Union Hospital did try to work with me. I've called, I, I did put in a formal complaint with the county. And again, like I said, my daughter has a medical condition. So on the responses that I've received over the internet with my article, well, you knew where you were moving to and you moved there, why'd you move there? Obviously, I'm not in my dream home, I took what I could afford. So does my child have to suffer with asthma because they refuse to turn off their ambulances? And the excuses that I've gotten from Singlerly is, we've had engine problems in the past. In my opinion, an ambulance should be at the top of the list for maintenance, that's a life-saving vehicle. There shouldn't be a worry of a starter going bad in the lane and blocking up traffic for other ambulances. None of these should be an issue. It's excuse after excuse after excuse. And was basically told by Singlerly, you're not going to win, we're going to do what we want, whether you like it or not.
May I ask, you keep mentioning Singlerly. There, there are eight other ambulance services in Cecil County?
Yes, sir.
Do you, do you find that they also have the same issues or not?
It's mainly Singlerly that leaves them running. Recently, Northeast has as well. And that's where there's the conflict of, and Rising Sun, and that's where there's the conflict of saying, we need to leave our motors running for the medication. My dog, I mean, my sister has diabetes. I know that for an hour, insulin is fine if, you know, still in the refrigerator, but not completely warm. So why are some ambulances able to shut their engines off with these same medications, but, but other ambulances aren't? Like I said, Al, and I both have noticed that since the articles ran, it's like they instigate. They even look over and laugh at us like, what are you going to do about it? I mean, it's like the, we've gotten nowhere with it. Unfortunately, the article ran in the middle of the summer when the air conditioner was on and it's not that much of an issue because my windows are closed. But right now, it's a beautiful day and my windows are open. At the front of my building, there's black from the exhaust all over the front of my building. That should say something in itself because that's going into my lungs, it's going into my family's lungs, it's going into my daughter's lungs, it's going into Mr. Townsend's lungs. Carbon monoxide kills.
Is your contact information on, on that sheet too?
I believe so.
Okay, very good.
Give us, give us a chance to.
I appreciate it.
We need to talk to the volunteer fire service in general, they have, I think it's monthly meetings and get that on to your agenda. They can create their own policy.
But they should care more for why? We try.
And then I'm certainly only heard one side and it's enlightening to hear your side of story. Yeah, I don't, I, I think a remedy needs to be.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
We have time for one more. Carol Davis? Mr. Davis?
Yes, Harold Davis, 645, please move. This is in reference to Senate Bill 236. You have received a letter from me on that. I stand by the letter. And I strongly suggest the first district be District One. We are very close to Miltown and Miltown is expanding. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to adjourn to five minutes and start again at 2 o'clock. We do.